Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. I'm Joe Shai, City Councilman. Mayor Smith is out tonight. Roll call.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Joe Shai.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sanders Hunter.
Hunter. Present.
And Mayor Smith, as you said, is excused. So we have a call.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Andy, will you lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the mayor's report, there are two items on the agenda. First is a reminder for everyone that the upcoming big community meeting is still scheduled for May 20th at 10 o'clock at the Assembly of God Church. Second, tonight, the Civil West Wastewater Treatment Facility Plan Report was supposed to be delivered, but it has been rescheduled for next meeting on May 25th. And that is all I have from the mayor.
The community meeting's at 10?
10 o'clock.
10 AM.
Council reports? Council members, anything to report?
We have had our share of transients and people moving through the community over the last few days, so kind of be aware. There's been some travelers, I would say, passing through and kind of leave a wake in their path, so.
It's all the keepers.
Yeah, you keep chuffing.
All right. Agenda approval.
I have moved the city council meeting agenda for 5/11/2017. Be approved.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda passes. Minutes approval from last meeting.
I move that the city council meeting on 4/27/2017 be approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve the minutes for 4/27. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion for the voucher approval, 1st of May 2017, of $32,060.28.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers and the amount stated. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
Let's see, you have for April, right? April stats, you got there for, you got 387 total contacts, 18 calls for the month, and nothing real spectacular, but yes, there was mention about the homeless people. Unfortunately, it's in the whole county. For some awkward reason, I don't know what it is, Lewis County is drawing homeless people in this year. They're more than ever. Centroya, Halas has got a bunch of them, even up east has got a bunch of them, and I don't know why.
There's a travel path here.
It must be, so anyhow, yeah, just call any time that there's any problems. We cleared the ones out down the railroad tracks and arrested a few, so.
I sent the VNSF railroad police down there this morning, too, to see if they were still there.
No, they're gone. They're out there. It usually never fails, most times, there's probably someone in the group that has warrants, so that's where we end up arresting someone, so. Just because they've traveled from one place to the other, they haven't maintained their coordinates or something like that, so they end up with a warrant, so. So any questions?
The graffiti? Or is that something that's being worked on?
Yeah, well, yeah, and that was in April that somebody came through. We didn't find who it was, but it must have been just somebody traveling through again that did that. So those are, I'm surprised you guys don't have more of it with the railroad tracks coming through that people would graffiti those type of deals, but yeah.
Oh, man, I think those were specific names.
No, yeah, those were specific names of people.
Oh, really? Oh.
So, yeah.
I haven't looked at that case, so I don't know what that one is going on with that, so.
Okay.
I think the mayor has some information for you about it if you want.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, maybe it's already been passed along.
It could have, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment?
Okay, first on the list, we have Cindy Radcliffe.
My name is Cindy Radcliffe. Some of you may know this, some of you don't. My husband and I, Layton, purchased the Dernoski farm up on the hill. Since purchasing the farm, we have applied for two building permits, and both times we've been overcharged. And when I challenged those charges, the charges were removed. And the charge that I'm disputing is the plan review fee. It was set at 65% on our permits, and I asked to have that removed because it was never authorized by the city council or by any ordinance. That is why tonight on your agenda, you can see that the city clerk is asking to have that added. That extra 65% supposedly is to cover the cost of the city building inspector, but he already received 75% of all the building permit fees. So that extra 65%, that goes right on top of the building permit fee. And that's excessive. It's way too much for somebody to have to pay. To give you an example, the building permit that we just applied for for our pole barn, if we applied through Lewis County, they told us it would be approximately $1,064. Applying through the city of Vader, it's going to cost us over $1,600 if that building plan review fee is instituted. That's way too much. It's more than if we could go to the county and get it for less. Why are we paying the city of Vader that much money just for the privilege of having a building department in town? Last year, the building department only did 10 permits. And of those 10 permits, none of them were like for brand-new construction or anything, you know, big. It's really not cost-effective to pay a building inspector and all this fees associated with the building department for 10 permits. And so tonight, I'm asking the council, number one, to reject that 65% fee and look at the charges and the costs that that building official is actually costing the city of Vader. If it's too much and your citizens can get a permit less expensive to the county, why aren't we going back to the county? You know, for 10 permits a year, that's really not, does not justify having a building department in town. The other thing I'm asking is that these people last year, and actually for the last two years, that have been charged a plan review fee of 65%, they should get their money back. My husband and I requested and asked for our $52 for that plan review fee to be refunded, and it was refunded. And we also asked to have the plan review fee for our current building permit, which was in the hundreds of dollars, to have that taken off as well because it wasn't an authorized charge. So these people that actually paid it, that didn't know that they could challenge it and not recharge that amount of money, and it's hundreds of dollars, they should get their money back. We all pay enough taxes, you know, you paid one, a plan review fee, you know, other people, Judy's paid a plan review fee. It's not an authorized charge, and they should definitely get their money back. So an audit of the building department would be in order to make sure that these people either know that they were overcharged and given them an opportunity to get their money back. And then a review of what that building official is really costing us. Because to put 65% on top of the 75% the man is already getting, that means just for our pole building, he's going to get almost $1,500 for six hours of work. And show of hands, anybody here make $250 an hour? You know, that's excessive, and it's not called for. And honestly, the guy that they use in Lewis County, a lot less money. Thank you.
Interesting. How many people were overcharged?
Out of the 21 permits that I have here, a little over 50% were overcharged, or charged that plan review fee. I guess it's up to you to decide whether or not it was an overcharge. But our $52 that we paid for our permit was refunded to us because it wasn't an authorized charge.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just some clarification. The plan review fee that she's talking about is an authorized charge. She's saying it's not authorized when it is authorized. However, it was not authorized to be calculated at the way that I was originally calculating. I was calculating them wrong. And so she was overcharged, which is why we, when she asked about it, we went back and realized, yeah, that is, she's correct. We've been charging her incorrectly. It is on the fee schedule, and you guys all have a copy of the fee schedule because this is an item that we have to discuss later. But you'll see that plan review fees are authorized, just not, I was charging them at 65% because that's what the building official told me that was how it was supposed to be done, and I neglected to check on it and make sure that what he was telling me was the correct information. I thought he knew because he helped us put the fees for the building permits together. And so I took his word for it instead of checking it on my own. So she's correct. It should be at $80 per hour instead of at a flat 65% of the building permit fee. So it is an authorized charge. We didn't charge them for something that isn't being charged for or isn't authorized by the city. If the council has approved that in the past. The other thing that I wanted to clarify is that she said that he would be giving $1,600 for two hours of work.
No, I said six hours.
Did she say six hours? Okay, I wrote down two. Okay, six hours of work. Okay, so never mind about that. I thought you said two hours, and so I was saying that's not correct. We can go, this is an item that we can, I'm thinking would probably be better to go over when we get to that topic instead of a public comment time, but I did want to clarify that it's not unauthorized charges. They are authorized charges, just that they've been calculated incorrectly. And yes, when she brought that up, we have been going through and looking to see how many people, if any, this affects. And the amount of people that it really affects as far as the amount that's been charged is nominal because most of the smaller permits, the 65% of the building permit fee comes out to be just about the same as it would have cost if we had charged them the per-hour rate. So they're very close in amounts, and I haven't gone back and asked the building official to try to research two years ago when he did these plan reviews to see how long his time was on those. That may be impossible to do at this point because we weren't asking him for that information at that time so that we could charge hourly. We may not be able to do that. However, the majority of them, like Ms. Radcliffe said, are smaller projects, and 65% of what their building permit fee turns out to be less than one hour of the building official's time.
Except for...
So I think most of them were charged fairly close to what it would have been anyways. It just turns out that way because the smaller permits, 65% of the smaller permits is less, so. And the fact that we can't really go back and check to see if they were right or wrong. There's a couple of them that go bigger that we can probably try to figure something out on, but the smaller ones, I don't know that there's anything we can really do at this point. And like I said, the cost, I think, is pretty close to negligible. I'd be happy to review any or all of these with any of you at any time. I've got the list in the office put together to show what the costs were and stuff, so we can talk about that. But the mayor and I have been addressing it since this issue came up with the Radcliffe's permit, so.
Actually, that's not entirely true because, for instance, a 10 by 10 deck, there were no plans submitted for that deck, and so there was nothing for the building official to review. All he did is say, "It's a 10 by 10 deck, yay, Bob," yet he was still charged 75 dollars.
There was a plan.
According to the owner, he didn't, all he did is draw on the application that he was doing a 10 by 10 deck. That was it. So if that took that building official an hour to review, then, he's an idiot. Sorry. A 10 by 10 deck, I could have reviewed that, you know, in 15 minutes, and I'm not a builder. So to charge somebody $80 for an hour to review a 10 by 10 deck is excessive. So all of those need to be looked at, whether, you know, one of them was for something simple as steps to three steps, you know, and he probably threw out on doing three steps and he was charged $75. Come on, people. $80 for them to review that?
Again, we should go over this when we talk about because there's more involved than just what's being talked about here.
All right. Thank you. Andy?
Well, I've been here a long time in this city. 33 years as a elected official. At the end of this year. I've sat here and I argued, too, but I was against, to a certain extent, when we hired this freak up north as our building inspector. Because it's too far, period. We could have went to Lewis County. We'd been cheaper up. We'd done better inspection and quicker time. And that's the way it used to be. If you want to run people out of town and get the city deeper and deeper and deeper with no population, go ahead and keep the way it is today, but I'm against it, period. I think we should readjust our building code and our building inspection and everything. That's my opinion, and I like to voice my opinion.
We can do that. We can do that. Next on the public comment?
Judy Costo. Judy Costo, 709 AC. Two comments. Mine were just comments. First, I want to talk about garbage. I would like to make a suggestion that in the month of June, that we have a three-day citywide cleanup, and I would be most happy to chair this. And what I would be looking for is the city, my fellow council people, to support the cost of two dumpsters, which I will be happy to look up the cost of those for you and bring that in. We need a dumpster for metal appliances and metal, and we need a dumpster for wood products. And if those could be set for a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I have a group from the Country Cruisers that are interested in going all around town with trucks and flatbeds to help anybody who can't load up their own washer and all of that kind of stuff. So this is just a suggestion for a three-day cleanup in June to kind of get the summer started and help those who can't help themselves, and I do not know what the cost of these dumpsters are. So I will have to get back to you if you're interested in pursuing this.
Absolutely.
I would be happy to do that. Okay, and the second thing is, I don't know if you noticed, but in the town prior this week, my little friends next door at Winlock are getting a $750,000 grant, Community Development Block Grant, I believe it is, and it will go towards affordable housing, yay, economic development, and community facilities. And I was wondering if at any point were we ever eligible or do we ever look into anything like that? And so, there you go. Thank you.
A little bit on that, Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
A little bit on that is, I have a son who lives in Longview, and, excuse me, he happens to be in prison, but you ought to see his house, and you ought to see his garage. I mean, it's full of junk. Well, I have to clean it up for him while he's on vacation. And I hate to say that, but I went to Collins County Police Control, and they charge for the small, big dumpsters. They'll bring them into your yard, bring it into your driveway and everything for 300 bucks, and you can fill them up, and they take it and come and pick them up, and that's pretty reasonable because he has a garage completely full of junk, plus his backyard. But that's the way some of these people live, and I don't like it, and he knows it, so I'm trying to clean it up.
Right.
But that's an idea of what it costs in Collins County to throw in those dumpsters. If the city went and had a couple of dumpsters from up here north, well, maybe that's about the same price. I don't know.
Yeah, Lewis County has resources for that.
They do?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there we are. I think it's a good idea to have, we used to have them when I was mayor and prior council person, way back to 2000 to 2004, 2004. We used to have them over there by my place with a big dumpster. We'd bring it in from Lewis County, and people would come down and dump it in, and you'd be surprised. Like, we sent out letters and stuff all over town in flyers. You'd be surprised how much it helped us to get some of the stuff in town cleaned up. Go around and tell them.
I was looking at, we've got a terrible, kids coming and going, coming and going. I was looking into when the free dump was in Centroya, because they usually always have a weekend where it's free dumping. Well, apparently now, you can go online and print out a form or fill it out online, whichever, I'm not really sure, and per household, you can get one free dump, and when, since you, from the time you fill it out, you have 30 days to go in. And maybe people just aren't aware of that, so maybe if we printed some out and, you know, people were aware that they had that option, that they would take advantage of that as well and clean up a little bit.
You could put it in the newsletter, let people know.
That's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think it's way better than going down on the days that it's a free dump and waiting for two hours in line until it's your turn. You have 30 days.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Yeah. So anyway.
All right. Yes, sir.
You know, about two years ago, we used to have two dumpsters, and they brought them in down to the big park. And we're going to have all these volunteers, and we did have volunteers that went around just like Judy said, that the cruisers would do, but people, for some reason, were darn reluctant to get involved. And why? I don't know. I mean, if somebody came to my house and said, "I'll grab those tires and those old TVs and junk and haul them off," they'd do, but it didn't happen. And they ended up with, I bet that one dumpster with electronics and metals, it wasn't a quarter full. A lot of people brought their woody debris from their trimmings.
Andy?
Well, if we done this, I would make a suggestion that maybe we can get volunteers with pickups and some of these kids that just walk around town with their, in their mouth, and have them help us load the pickups at different houses where some of the older people can't pick up their garbage and put it in, put it in the pickup and take it down to the dump, and hey, we might be able to clean the city up a little bit.
Sure. This could also be a good topic to bring up at the big community meeting in a week or two.
And Judy, just to let you know, I already started talking to Jeff about this last week.
He was on my list also.
Yeah, and he's trying to figure out, because my thought was specific, like, orange garbage cans that we could take around to different people's houses and say, "Here's your garbage can for this week, fill it up," or however, type of thing like that. But he is willing to work with us also.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie had something to say earlier?
Just a couple of things. On the dumpsters, the county has provided in the past, has had funding to provide these free recycling days and free dump days and stuff where they would bring in those big dumpsters like you guys were talking about. However, last year, they didn't get funding for it, and so we weren't able to do it. I haven't heard that they have the funding back again. However, I haven't checked on it either. So that's another thing I can check into and see if by chance they got their funding back to provide those free of charge. If not, the other city would have to, I'm sure, come up with some way to pay for it, but I think that's a great idea. The other thing I wanted to mention was about the CDBG grant that you were talking about. We have used the CDBG block grants in the past quite a bit. It's what paid for our sewer lines, the replacements and stuff that we did recently in the last couple of years. However, remember that that's the funding that we lost because the Department of, the Federal Department of Housing says that Winlock is too affluent to qualify for those funds, and so there's a debate about, I mean, Vader's too affluent to qualify for those funds. So that's why we can't, we can't apply for them right this minute until we get a new income survey that proves that that's incorrect information. So for now, we can't apply for those.
I wonder where they go.
Yeah, I know.
They got a good store, and everybody in town to...
Wouldn't it have to be affordable housing and stuff?
On affordable houses.
And a lot of people don't want to get with that.
Yeah, so anyways, that's where those. Thank you for that information.
Any other public comment?
That's all we have on the list.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. City business. Item one, update on stormwater drainage on Seventh Street, Highway 506 near Ananen. I've been told that during the good weather we had, we attempted to contact the Winlock employee to come to bring the scoping equipment down. Unfortunately, he was the only one on staff those three days, and so he couldn't get away from town, and so we lost that opportunity. But they are, you guys are looking into potentially paying him after hours to come do that, to open up the window of opportunity in coming weeks. Any other discussion? Jason's, can't take this anymore.
I was just driving out.
Devin Jackson, our attorney, or not attorney, our engineer that we've hired to work on our street project, he has some people that he's checking with to see if possibly he could get somebody to help us do that.
I actually walked him through the problem down there.
Devin?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Showed him what was going on with the drainage and stuff, so he's got his...
So he's reached out to one that he thought might be helpful, but they aren't, but he's got another one that he's reaching out to. So we're still trying to get some way to do it, so, without paying an arm and a leg to do it, so.
Good.
Working on it.
Any other discussion on that topic? All right. Item two, update on code enforcement topic. Jill, would you cover this?
I just wanted to let you guys know at the last council meeting, you guys, I'm sorry, you guys, council said that they wanted to have an executive session to discuss the possible litigation of two or three different locations. However, we need to have our attorney present either by phone or in person, and she's out of the country right now, so we have to push that back to the next council meeting. So we will be still having that executive session just at the next council meeting, if that's okay with everybody, because she's gone and we can't have her here. And then the other thing is, council requested that we send out a courtesy notice to the people with boarded-up properties and just kind of inform them, and so you have in your packets a copy of that letter that we put together and that the mayor approved, and we did mail those out earlier this week. I don't remember what day exactly. But unfortunately, there were only three properties and two homeowners that were involved in these three properties that really applied to this particular issue because everybody else who has boarded up properties are still in the process of some kind of code enforcement action already. So it wouldn't really make sense to send them this letter when we're already working with them and their time isn't up yet, so, with their code enforcement. So there are only three that were really stagnant in this case where we needed to know what's going on. But we did send those out, and we do have the letter now, so if you guys are pleased with that, we can continue to use that in the future if we need to, but we did mail those out, so.
When you talk with these people that we're still dealing with, if you want to make sure to let them know, hey, yeah, you boarded it up, but...
Yes, when they complete their code enforcement action and that's all done and they're all in compliance, they receive a letter, and the letter states that information, so that they know that they only can be up for one year.
Okay. Good. Judy?
Can I take just a moment to ask a question on this? And maybe it's the wrong time, but if, for instance, my house is boarded up, and I come in and I clean it all up and I paint it all up, and it looks all grand and wonderful, I mean, really nice, but nobody lives in it, is that still a violation?
No. As long as it's secured. What we have, when we have a problem is when it becomes unsecured, where there's broken windows, or animals or kids or transients can get into the building. If it's shut and locked and secured, and all the windows are intact, and under... If it's shut and locked and secured and all the windows are intact and under the house is intact, you know, the siding and stuff under
If it looked like someone lived there, then it would be
Then it would be fine, it can sit vacant, it can sit vacant, it just can't sit unsecured is the big key, is it has to be secured.
Thank you very much.
Wheels are turning over there.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Uh, item three, update on vehicle weight limit regulations. What is the update?
Um, the update is that I forwarded um council's suggestions and requests for uh verbiage from the city attorney. However, like I said, she's out of the country for like two weeks, so she didn't have time to work on it to get us something before she left, and it'll have to be the next council meeting when she has it ready for us, so uh we're just kind of bumping into the following council meeting if everybody's okay with that, since
This is gonna be a busy council meeting.
Yeah, the next council meeting is gonna be
Civil West and
Yeah.
Well, why can't we go back to the old type ordinance we had, which is still probably pretty good? So many tons is only allowed on city streets and it tells you which streets they are. Instead of all this Mickey Mouse stuff about going to the attorney and playing games and I tell you, it don't work very I'd just soon go back to the old ordinance where we, it was, it worked pretty good for us.
It was thirty thousand pounds and you have to get a permit, that ordinance?
Well, it was, all you did was come to the city hall and write out a thing they would and the city clerk would say, fine, you can go down this street with this tonnage. And that's all the amount to do, it was very simple. And it didn't, didn't hurt them, uh, the truck drivers and so forth, because they come here to the city hall. Find the city clerk. Do what they tell them, that this is what the ordinance said, you can go on this street here and this street there for so many thousand pounds or so many tons. And that was very simple.
That's what it is, that's what we're trying to do.
I think we've just made it easier, we've pretty much opened it up for people to actually use the streets, made, we made it easier.
But it just keeps the people from using the streets when you, you get a truck driver that's got five yard truck, for instance, and he only can hold it for
That's, that's the change, that's the change that we're making is what you're talking about. That's what we're doing, is making it so that people can have stuff come and deliver
And they don't
And not have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, we're trying to go back to, to allow people to do that. And only the big commercial, big, like timber, timber trucks or something that have numerous loads in and out, we're the only ones that will have to get permits. Everybody else won't be able to.
Yep.
Or won't have to.
They just need to call and inform the city of it being, taking place. Correct?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yep, we made it easier.
We're trying to do that, I think, I think we're on the same page, we are trying to do that.
Because I want to get five yards of gravel this summer and
You can.
Grab, grab down my alley, so the post, post office guy is supposed to be going down it.
Yeah.
And I'm making it deeper and deeper for me to
Give my permission, Andy.
You don't need to drive on city streets for that, you go from the state highway onto the, into the alley.
To be a nice guy, to make the alley nice for citizens to travel down.
Good. Any other discussion on the weight limit topic? All right, item four, council to consider resolution twelve dash twenty seventeen, Vader fee schedule update. All right, there's a lot of items on here.
Should we discuss the easy ones first and then leave the difficult ones for last, or do you want to discuss the difficult one first? Because there's five changes in here that I'm proposing or the administration is proposing. Do you want me to explain?
Start at the bottom, work your way up.
Okay, we'll start at the bottom, first of all, um, we're trying to make, get our, our Vader fee schedule uh that include every cost that the city could possibly have, and we keep finding things here and there where it's written in an ordinance somewhere, and we're adding it to this fee res, this fee schedule as we find it. One of those things is number five, which is the solid place for the garbage fees. Those are already set by ordinance, but if we can get them, get everything into one place, then we only have hope to look one place to find all, all of that. So that's one thing, is we're adding those fees to this schedule, not changing any of the amounts or anything, it's all the same. Just getting it added in here for, for ease, so that everything's the same. Um, uh, number three, number four kind of go together.
Hold on on that.
Oh, yes?
Um, wait, never mind, go ahead.
Okay. Number three and number four kind of go together. Um, we have, for our development regulations, when somebody wants to do something with their property, um, if there are options for having a variance, if their property doesn't meet or their project doesn't meet the property regulations. Um, and that variance is set at seventy-five dollars, is a flat fee for the city. Um, however, we have a special shoreline program, a shoreline management program that the state requires us to have to protect our shorelines along Olaqua Creek. And in that, um, council approved that update last, I think, two thousand fifteen, maybe it was two thousand fourteen, I'm sorry, I don't oh, two thousand fifteen oh four, so it was two thousand fifteen, you guys updated that. Part of that states that there is an option for a shoreline variance. Um, through that, however, it requires that we hold public hearings and that we make big signs and post them at the properties. Um, all these are city responsibilities, uh, we have to advertise for the public hearings and we have um costs with the um city, I don't know if it's the planner or the attorney or who it is that would facilitate this public hearing and all that, but the costs are, get, get in the hundreds, and so um, we need to have a s- specific shoreline variance cost that's different than the standard, because it just costs more to do it. And so, um, we are suggesting that we include the shoreline variance and add that to our um fee schedule, since we need to be able to do shoreline variances. Um, and set it at a five hundred dollar base cost, and then if it ends up costing us more than that, then we can add to it as time goes on. Um, that's why we have plus costs, but if it's less than that, then it's great. Um, and then just, number four is just clarifying that the other variance line item is just for standard development regulations, however, the shoreline specific to, a variance specific to a shoreline would be at the five hundred dollar cost. Does that make sense? Did I kind of talk in a circle, or does that make sense? Any questions about those? Looks like Mr. Wilson.
Andy?
Uh, I'm reading this resolution twelve twenty seventeen, update the Vader fee schedule. It gives down here to city council, may, and it's three items. Well, I make a motion, we not approve the resolution, adopt the Vader fee schedule and give further direction to staff to rewrite a lot of this stuff. You start going through here, subdivision and temporary use permit and all of this, there's way too many fees in there for for the people that live here in the city of Vader. They just learn, let's just run the people out of here. You can laugh, Jill, if you want to about it.
I'm not, I'm not laughing.
But I want to see this city get back to growth, I want to see this city grow. I like this city, that's why I moved here in nineteen fifty-four. Period, I, I get tired of seeing it, all of these two lots, two hundred and fifty per lot.
Do you, Andy, do you think that it's the
We have a motion on the, on the floor, it's not open for discussion yet.
Yeah, I'm done.
There is a motion
I made my point, I made a motion.
There is a motion on the floor, um, it must be heard. Um, is there a second for Mr. Wilson?
Can you clarify what the actual motion is?
Mr. Wilson made a motion for option three on this resolution twelve dash seventeen to not approve the resolution adopted, not approve the resolution, adopt the Vader fee schedule and give further direction to sta, to staff. Um, that is the motion, do we have a second?
I would second that motion, I think there's some things in here that um are confusing and that do need to be changed or reconsidered.
We do have a second, um, now it's time for discussion before, before the vote. Um, is there any other comment?
I have a comment I don't want to hear.
I also have a comment, I was waiting, um, I'll let you go first.
Um, I would just like to clarify that the, the things in this fee schedule are not things that we are just making up. These are part of the Growth Management Act requirements for the state, they require us to have these plans in place, to do these types of projects and to, and to, and to permit all this stuff. We're not making it up, we're not just saying, hey, we want to do this to the small city, the state requires it. We have to, we have to do all this planning stuff, if we didn't have to do that, that would make my life so much easier, I would love that. But that's not the option that we have as a city, so I just want to clarify that it's not, we're just saying, oh, let's throw this in, oh, let's throw another fee in. This is all the stuff they require us to have, we have to do it. And we have to do it per the state regulations, so I, I don't know how we get around this stuff. I mean, if we didn't have to do this stuff, there's, uh, the weight limit thing, that's about the only thing I can think of that we're not required to do. And that's just to, to help the city get back some money when, when big trucks come in and damage the roads, that we already have a hard time keeping up anyways, but, but I mean, all this land use and planning stuff, that's all required by the state. They make us do it, we don't have a choice, and we have to cover our costs, and a small city ends up paying more for these because we can't afford to have somebody on staff, we have to pay consultants that do piecework, because we don't have the money to pay somebody full-time to be on staff, and so, yeah, it does, like with the building official, it costs us a little bit more because we don't have the ability to keep somebody on staff forty hours a week, so I guess that's
I understand that, I understand uh that these things are required, um, I, I just have uh just questions about
Sure.
How to make this more fair, I guess? And like, I, like I just had a few minutes before the meeting to just kind of get some clarification and kind of get my head wrapped around it, like, I think there's more confusion in, in the council, you know? Maybe it's something that we can take some time, you know, before the next city council meeting and get together and
You'd have to hold a workshop, it would be a public meeting, but yeah, if you want to get together as councils, sure, you could do that.
Yeah, absolutely, this council's, yes.
Is this, is this if you were building from new, or is this if you're repairing or replacing something in an existing home?
Are you talking about the plan review fee specifically?
I'm just talking, yes, flat rate fees or like, um, re-roofing. If you're, like fixing a porch or front porch or something.
A re-roof on page five is eighty dollars, that's your permit fee. And generally, you don't have to get a plan review fee, a plan review for that, that would just be the flat eighty dollars. There are some cases where they do have to review plans, like if you're going from a three-tab roof to a metal roof, there is some additional structure, structural things that change, and so they do have to review plans for that type of roofing, so you could get the additional planning fees for that, that's what I'm told.
On an existing residence, not
On existing residence, yeah, if you re-roof, it's eighty dollars. And we are required to permit that, and my, what it's been explained to me is that because of the, the roof load that, that has to be required, that the loading is not too much, and sometimes people put layer over layer of the roofing, and, yeah, they have And it's, it's our responsibility as a city to re, to make sure that whatever buildings are up are, are safe enough to code.
Well, I owe you eighty dollars then, because I had a new wood stove put in.
Okay.
I, you know, there was a licensed guy doing it, I didn't think I had to come down and get an okay to do that, so I guess I owe you eighty dollars. I don't know, I'm confused.
City, city council, we had, we have two, two comments, would you like to take them?
Sure.
Yes, we'll start discussing, okay.
I have just a few questions, who puts the dollar amount on the fees? Is it the council?
On what?
On the fees, who, who says eighty dollars for a stove or it says, who makes the
The council has approved all of these fees in the past, none, none of this is, the only
But you came up with the amount, right?
They were, they were suggested, yeah, they were suggested from the city, city administrative, based on
Costs.
Costs from what we were, that we'd be exposed to.
Well
And so most of this in this packet is, is nothing new, we've been operating like this for a long time.
Is money that the city is transferring to the subsidiary company that we have to pay to do what you're asking us to do?
So most of the, all these fees are eighty dollars, for instance, our, our inspector charges us eighty dollars an hour to come to the city to ins, do the inspection, and so we relay the cost in the form of the permit.
Well, I think all these fees is one reason why a lot of people just do it. They don't even let them know that anything's being done, because they can't afford to be on top of like putting a stove in or, you know, putting the back porch on, they, they just do it.
So, I mean, I understand that situation, and so, I mean, what, what does the city do at this point, because if somebody's roof caves in, because they redid it and they put too many layers, and then the snow came and it made the load too heavy, and then the roof caves in and they, somebody gets hurt or somebody dies.
That's their insurance company.
Okay, wait, but, but, not necessarily, but then some, they want to sue somebody and blame somebody. Yeah, that's exactly what, the state says, why, why do they have a roof that doesn't have, that has too much weight on it? Who's allowing that? They go to the city, the state comes to the city and says you don't think so? Okay, well.
Why aren't you letting them, let them take the lot building?
We had Lewis County for many, many years, and part of the problem with using Lewis County and why council chose to not go with Lewis County anymore is because um they don't communicate well with us and give us informers to what's going on, and also, they don't do any code enforcement. So if we have any problems, they don't provide any of that, we have to, we have to do it on our own anyways. And if we're already doing it on our own, wherever we pay a building official to do all of our code enforcement, we might as well just be in charge of all of it, that way we don't have all the communication back and forth and and the, the challenge of trying to do things their way here and then our way with the code enforcement, even though, well, Lewis County, you took it, well, the city's responsible for it, well that's
So the, so basically
Has chosen to do it this way.
Basically, the, the housing inspector isn't in charge of the ten he is in charge of them, but that's not what we pay him for, just those ten applications or permits. He does our code enforcement also, so that's just an extra thing that we have him do because he's doing all this other stuff. Any city you go to, Vancouver, all of them, in fact, Vancouver, if you change your garbage disposal, there's a fee for it. Lot of people don't know about it, and they just do it themselves.
That's right.
If you go to Home Depot, the garbage disposal doesn't have a sign that says you need a permit for this, people just do it. Um, I think the problem we're having is, in such a small town, people know everything about everybody. It's true, and everybody pays attention, as soon as I poured concrete, I had somebody driving by the house then come running up to the city to find out if I got a permit. Okay, so that's why, this isn't anything new, I mean, this whole permit thing, it's statewide, it's nationwide, it's stuff that we are dealing. It's stuff that we're dealing, that sixty-five percent is also there. Now, I also wanted to make comment that when, if you think that these fees and stuff like that are going to keep people or get people to move out of town, be quite honest, that's why this town has fallen apart, is because those are the people that move in, are the ones that don't pay attention to anything, just do what they want to, and no, 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 I'm not directing that you or anybody, I'm just saying yeah, oh, I don't like the fees.
But because they're expensive.
But I also, I also don't like living on a street that has trailers and garbage everywhere and broken down houses and driving, you know, you gotta, when you have to tell your friends specifically which route to go to get to your house so that they don't think bad of you, there's issues. And so these are going to get rid of the riffraff, because that's what I think they are, is riffraff.
I haven't so far now.
Because we, because we haven't been enforcing them. Just this last year is when we started getting the teeth to be able to enforce Just this last year is when we started getting the teeth to be able to enforce this stuff.
Well, code enforcement is important, but not making these fees so high. I have the money to pay the sixteen hundred dollars. I shouldn't have to pay more than what Lewis County or Kals County or the city of Longview or any other county would charge you. That's what, it's not that I don't have the money. It's not even that the fact that I won't buy the permit, because I will. If she said I absolutely had to buy it, I'd buy it. It's the fact that it's excessive. Sixty-five percent on top of an already building permit that's over a thousand dollars. That's excessive. That's what I was getting. Code enforcement, absolutely important. I back it one hundred percent. But why can't we split the two?
So where does, where does the money, where does the money come from for code enforcement?
I don't know. Where do you get it now?
We don't. We don't have money. It, it comes out of the bottom line of everything else that we have to pay for. So where do you think that we come up with a little bit of money to be able to afford code enforcement?
Well, you're not making money on the fees.
Permitting fees, that's one of the things that permitting fees, including the plan review fee, help pay for. They have, wait a minute, wait a minute. They help pay for those types of things that don't have another way to be funded that are related.
They do have a way to be funded. Tell them the property owner and/or take his property or other ways, but don't charge me because...
So this is the situation, so you haven't been at council meetings in the past where we've talked, where we have talked about this, like at the last council meeting. The situation we're in with this particular thing is that we have three houses right now where the homeowners are not responding to our code enforcement. We've done everything we can. We've spent several hundred, if not more, dollars on doing the official legal, um, notifications of violation and all of that. And they have not responded and not done anything. Out of fourteen that we've been working on, we have three that aren't responding. All the rest have either done something or in the process of doing something. So anyone who says that code enforcement isn't doing anything is wrong because it is, it's slow. No, but the point I'm making is those three, the next step is that we have to go to litigation, which means we have to pay an attorney to take these to court. And that's somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars for each one. Where does that money come from? We don't have that kind of money.
So you're gonna make us pay more?
No.
Who, how is it gonna be paid? Do you guys want the code enforcement done? Somebody, yes, sure. Why not?
You disagree.
Why not? Why wouldn't, why shouldn't it come from other permitting fees? Where else are we gonna get it? Shall we have council raise property taxes? Would you rather do that? I mean, there's diff, that's the only way we have to get money is through fees. Well, I vote everybody that works for this city has to live in Vader and take the brunt of all of this nonsense with all the rest of us. Go for it.
Okay, well, I'm talking about you because you're so adamant about this and I understand yours for us. And I'm not attacking you at all. I'm just saying. No, I'm not.
Okay, hold on. I raised my voice and I'm sorry that I raised my voice. I'm very passionate about this because I have been coming to these meetings for two years now and I've, I hit it almost every one I can. And all I heard before I was on city council was, why don't you guys do something about these burnt down houses, these bad houses? There's these houses, there's that houses. Right? But are we not working on them, Judy?
The burnt houses is still there and my two houses are still boarded up.
Okay.
My, I'm not pulling fingers.
Are we, are we, are we working on stuff?
I don't know.
We are, we've got a list of fourteen that have gotten cleared up and we are still, still working on them.
I honestly don't know what the fourteen are. I apologize.
Okay, you don't.
No, I'm not, obviously not.
And I can't go into this specific house over this microphone.
Totally.
But things are getting worked on. Just on F Street, a house is gone, totally gone. Cleaned up, it's just an empty field now. Okay? That would not have happened if it wasn't for this and this stuff that we're working on. But everybody always wants it better and nicer and I'm not directing anything towards you because I'm paying those fees too. But everybody wants it nicer and cleaner, but they don't want...
They don't want to pay for it.
They don't want, they don't want any of these fees, they don't want all that. And if that's the case, then we're gonna have a bunch of these houses over here on A Street where they have outhouses on the outside of them. So yes, there was a house, but our code enforcement took care of it and got them removed. They actually had a outhouse outside of their home that they would go outhouse in to keep it nice. So, but because we're such a small community, yes, it hurts. I mean, it hurts, but everybody, everybody's working on it. And I give kudos to Jill, I give kudos to these people because every, this is the only place that they can come to bark at. And everybody knows everything about everything is the problem in this small little town. If you go to a big town, it's all the same thing, but nobody pays attention, nobody talks to their neighbor or anything. So this stuff, does it need work? Yes. And we are doing our darndest to try to figure out these things. But just for instance, in the newspaper this last week, it talked about, why doesn't the sewer have senior citizen discounts? And there is a senior citizen, it's somewhere in here. There is a senior citizen discount for the sewer bill.
Folks, we are slightly off topic.
I, I totally understand this, but...
Yeah, you were second on the list of public that, yes. Have you, have your turn? Please be concise.
I'm going to pass on my turn.
Thank you.
Can I have it?
No.
I'll pass it.
We have one more request from the public, was the council interested in hearing a short comment?
Jason, I know where you live.
I'll take a comment.
One of the council members would like to hear what you have to say.
I'm just asking that it be more in line with what Kals County, Lewis County, city of Longview, not to be so far higher. A little bit, I understand, but it's getting way too high. And you know, yes, we have to pay for things that we don't want to. We just pay our federal taxes and we've been drinking for a month. So, but let's try to keep it a little bit in line with what other counties and cities are doing. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you for bringing us back to where we started. Andy?
I'm talking about fee scheduling. That's what I started talking about. Fee, dollar sign, pennies. That they're way out of line with a lot of this stuff. How much was, something to do about sprinklers in your yard, charging you eighty dollars? That's ridiculous. That's what I'm talking about is the fee scheduling.
Actually, there's sprinklers in your yard is actually a very common thing. In Vancouver, you have to have those inspected yearly. And you have to have a certified person come out once a year and blow those lines out and disconnect them so that they don't back up in the water thing. So eighty dollars for a sprinkler in your yard is not excessive.
Let's, uh, let's, uh, move on, folks. Let's move, let's move on. We do have a motion on the floor.
It's like it costs, this costs us just like it costs Vancouver to, to have those things inspected.
All right, so...
Can I ask one question?
It's your meeting. You can ask a question.
Thank you. How do, as a homeowner, how do you know? Is there a list somewhere?
Yeah.
I mean, I might be a...
You're, you're holding it in your hand.
You're holding it in your hand? There's also the development regulation?
This is the first time I've seen this and maybe that, that's my own doing. But you know, we put a new heat pump in, we didn't put a new wood stove in, so...
Shh, stop!
But you know, my research, I found reliable people. It never even entered my mind that I needed to come down and say, I'm going to do this and what do I owe you because I'm going to do this. So is there a list that people know? It wasn't like I was trying to rip the city off. I wasn't aware.
All it takes is a phone call.
Yeah, but when do you know to make a phone call?
I, that's a good question. I mean, I guess it's just something that we need to continue to publicize and let people know that when you do changes, you're supposed to, you know, there's some things that are permitted. Yes, we have a list of everything that, that requires a permit. Yeah, we've got it.
So you, you do your research, you hire a reliable company that you think is gonna do everything up to code, but you still need to get permission?
You gotta talk to them about permitting. Either you require them to do the permitting as part of your, as part of your contract with them, or you do the permitting and don't do, don't let the work get done until you've got the permitting. Some contractors will do the permitting for you. And they're familiar enough with the process that they know typically what's permitted and what's not. But, you know, I mean, how do people know? I don't know. That's a good question. How does council let people know that they, that there are these things that need to be permitted? I don't know. How do you want to let them know?
I don't know.
I, I know.
I would have never guessed.
All right, folks, folks, everyone? Please, thank you. I'm letting this meeting get a little, uh, getting a little rowdy. I don't have to bang it, I can just say it. Let me say three things here. We need to move on to this mo, this motion that's on the floor. First, I have seen many council members come and go over my four years. A lot of folks come in and they're like, I'm gonna make this change. And then they get in, they sit in the seat, they look at the papers in front of them, they go to make the decision and they go, wow, there's a lot of layers to what I'm trying to decide. No wonder things don't get changed or no wonder they decided to do what they're doing. So it's a little bit more, there's more to it than, than just, we charge sixty-five percent. There, there, there's a reason why that was selected. Second, um, I forgot what my second was, but... But the third is this, this motion, this motion at hand. Um, and the motion is to not approve any of the five options. Um, out of these five options, it's, it's my opinion that only one is controversial right now. Change two, three, four, and five are all fairly performant. Adding the already established garbage rates to our fee schedule, uh, this is simply a list of all of our fees put in one place to make it convenient for the, for the citizens to know what the, what the fees are. Um, I'm not, I'm not in favor of option three that the motion says, which is not approve any of them. I'd like the council personally to look at maybe approving some of these right now and revisiting option one. That, that's, that's, that's my, that's my opinion before we move on to the voting on the motion. Any other comment before we take a vote on this motion?
I still, I still think that would, that would take further, further discussion.
Option all of, all, all five or just option one?
What, I...
Shane, I should say...
I don't know what the binding site plan is. I, we didn't get that far.
That has to do with subdivisions and I'm not sure I can explain that either because I, I'm not sure. But it's part of the subdivision process and some of, somewhere in the subdivision process, there's a certain scenario where a binding site plan would be required. And in order to do that, there's a cost because it has to be reviewed and approved. And so that cost was included in the list, the fee schedule, when it was originally, when this whole fee schedule was originally proposed. And for some reason it got blacklined out and I've been checking with the other, the planner and the building official and all of them to say, can you think of any reason why we would have blacklined that out? Is the amount wrong? Is there something, you know, some reason why it wouldn't be included? And nobody can figure out why it was blacklined. And they all said, yeah, we need to have a cost for the binding site plan. So I said, well, let's, since we're already making some changes to the fee schedule proposing to make some changes, let's add it back in because there's a scenario where we need to have a cost, otherwise the city eats the cost for that. So that's the binding site plan. I, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what it is or when that happens, but it, it has to do with subdivisions is all I can tell you at this point.
But should you vote on something you can't explain? We're not Congress.
Well, I mean, that's why council has their packets and if they need more information, they come to, come to city hall and get more information. We've got the ordinances available, so you're welcome to read through them and...
All right, council...
Find out what that means.
Council, there is a motion on the floor. Uh, I'll repeat the, the motion. We have a first and a second to not approve any of these changes on this resolution and to give staff further direction. We ready to vote on this?
So is this something that, because I, I would prefer not voting on this right now because...
We have to respond to this motion.
I, I know that.
And, and that's where I was coming from too. I think there's, there's more.
I think that it needs to be discussed more and, uh, I guess, yeah, understood and researched a little bit more. But all of a sudden now we do have a motion on the floor, so we have to vote. But, um, I guess I'm kind of looking for some guidance as to, I don't want to kill this thing right now, but I do want to postpone it for another time so that we can go over this stuff a little bit more.
Yeah, that's...
But if we...
That's, I think that's what we're asking for.
But I think number three is not approve, uh...
It says, and give direction, give further direction to staff. So the further direction would be, let's talk about this some more. Let's go, let's get some more information.
I understand three, three and four and five and I'm just...
So I think your op, your option is to either yes, say, okay, we don't want to approve any of these right now. We could agree with Andy's motion, vote yes on that. And then we would re-address all of these issues somehow, either in a workshop or somehow get more information so that council knows and can make a better decision on all of them. The other option would be to vote against Andy's motion and, uh, it's possible that somebody could propose another motion saying, okay, I propose that we only approve change number five and number whatever, whatever, and then re-address the other ones that we have questions about later. So like approving part of them now, the ones that you're comfortable with and the ones you're not comfortable with waiting till later and working on those. That's, that's another option. The other option is to do nothing.
Andy?
This is why I made the motion because it says, and give further directions to staff. It gives us time
Right.
To go through some of the other ordinances
Sure.
And look at them and adopt them or dump them, whatever. It's the same way as the way we're talking about. But that's why I went for number three. I didn't want to, I want to put it so it can be reviewed.
The whole, the whole thing?
Yeah, well, go home and start looking at some of these things. Go to other cities and that's what I'm gonna do.
All right. Motion's on the floor? Let's take, take a vote. Um, all of those in favor of not approving the resolution and giving the, giving direction to staff, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, couldn't tell, was it aye?
Nay.
Aye, aye. So we have four ayes and one nay. Okay, thank you.
Motion carries.
Would we like to do a couple of workshops?
So, so though, so we don't approve the whole thing right now. That is a, that is further discussion, yes. Moving on.
Now you have to decide how, how do you want to discuss it further?
Workshops?
That's the same resolution.
If we want a workshop, we need to schedule a date and time.
What works out with it, uh, evenings are, are my best during the week. So I'm pretty open to a workshop anytime during the week.
You what, huh?
We're talking about putting together a workshop so we can get this kind of talked about.
I think that's a good idea.
What, what day's good for you?
Pretty busy.
So preferred time for the city employees, Jill?
Uh, for me, whenever, Wednesdays are bad. And I'm thinking about the mayor's schedule and I know about his schedules. Tuesdays are bad, Wednesdays are bad. Uh, we're, we're talking evenings. Some Thursdays are okay.
What about next Thursday? What about next Thursday?
Next Thursday's possible. As far as the mayor's concerned, I don't know for sure. And possibly Friday is possible. Hello? Is that you, Andy?
It's not me this time.
Uh, Jason, our, our evenings are, are what's best for you, not during the day? Because we can do this during, during business hours as well. We've done workshops before during business hours.
Yeah, that, just Wednesdays and Thursdays aren't good for me during the day.
Fridays during business hours? Everybody?
Say that.
Fridays during business hours sometime?
If it's next Friday.
Like not tomorrow, but the following, or you mean tomorrow?
Fridays are terrible kind too. I go to work at ten.
What about next Thursday night at six o'clock?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
It doesn't work for, I mean, I'm not the only one here. It's like, oh.
You're the only one we care about, Jason.
I'm retired.
I prefer, I prefer earlier if possible. Thursday night's fine, just.
Four o'clock?
Earlier, four would be great. That would be really, would really be great.
I think that would work better for the mayor as well.
That's the eighteenth?
Later.
That's Thursday, the eighteenth at four o'clock. Thursday, the eighteenth at four o'clock.
All right, workshop, Thursday, May eighteenth, four o'clock.
There, be sure there. And if you guys have specific information that you want to know about these, please let me know in advance so I can get that together for you. And I'm not sure what all you want to know, but whatever I have and I can get, I just usually need a little bit of time to get the information together for you. So let me know what you want to know.
All right. Any other discussion on this item four, resolution twelve twenty seventeen right now? Or should we just move on? Moving on then. The last item. Item five, city business. Council would consider Little Falls Community Center for nonprofit reduced sewer rate. Ms. Costello has opened a nonprofit community center in town and is looking to, for city council approval to qual, to get the rate category four, if you were to refer to your fee schedule that we just talked about. Rate category four is on there, the reduced rate for nonprofits. And it is my understanding that her, her nonprofit does qualify and that the city council is able to approve the status for her. Andy?
I, I can't find it here. I got it someplace, but I make the motion if we approve the request for category four sewer rate status by the Little Falls Community Center.
Very good. There's a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve the category four sewer rate for the new Lewis Little Falls Community Center. And if you guys were wondering what page, it's page eleven of your fee schedule that would show what that rate would be. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Sanders. Any other discussion?
I have a question. What is Little Falls Community Center? What's, I haven't, this is the first I've heard about it.
It's only because I just got all the paperwork finished. It will be opening on Monday. Hours will be nine to four, Monday through Friday. Half of my building has been designated to about eight people in this community that have nothing to do all day long but come over and drink coffee and play pinochle. My thrift store will be supporting the funds. It is nonprofit also. And so it's all one big combined project.
So this is your building over here?
My building, yes.
Oh, okay.
My building over there. And it's open to the general public, falls under all of the category of the five oh one C three nonprofit.
Well, we don't have a tavern anymore to go in and have coffee here.
It's the next best thing.
Ride your horse in there, huh?
Go BS with half, give you a cup of coffee. I might even bring some hot chocolate over. We can go down to Castle Lock and we can get the day old donuts too and bring them down.
There you go.
Any other discussion on this before we vote? All those in favor of approving the request for category four sewer status by the Little Falls Community Center, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you for your service to the community. That is the end of our city council meeting. The time is seven eighteen P M. Thank you all for coming.